Good evening. Six o'clock on the dot right now. Welcome to the Montrose City Council meeting for January... February, February, thank you. It is six o'clock. I got that part right. Tuesday, February 4th, 2020. And we will start with the pledge of allegiance, but... Oh, okay. I was looking for Gunnison.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Dave Bowman.
Present.
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
Roy Anderson.
Present.
Judy Ann Fyles.
Present.
Doug Glassbell.
Present.
Youth Council Representative Clara Carrasco.
Here.
Thank you. All council members and our youth council representative are present.
Thank you. Any changes to the agenda, additions or deletions?
There are none that I'm aware.
Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak to council on something that is not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we will get into the agenda. First up, approval of minutes, city council consideration of the minutes of the January 21, 2020, special city council meeting and the January 21, 2020, regular city council meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve that as written.
I'll second it.
Please vote. And Ms. Bynum was not here for much of the meeting, so is abstaining. And moving on, number seven, city council consideration of rescheduling the April 6 work session and the April 7 city council meeting to March 30 and 31 respectively, due to the 2020 municipal election on April 7. And I don't know that we need an explanation, so discussion or motion, please.
I'll make a motion to reschedule the April 6 work session and the March 30 session and the April 7 regular city meeting to March 31. Is that... Am I reading the right one?
That'll work. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, second.
Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Number eight, ordinance 2493, second reading. City council consideration of ordinance 2493 on second reading. An ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, repealing and replacing Title IV, Chapter IV, Section II, definition of manufactured housing, adding Title IV, Chapter IV, Section II, definition of modular building, and repealing and replacing Title IV, Chapter IV, Section 24(c) of the Official Code of the City of Montrose regarding zoning regulations. Senior Planner Gary Baker, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As stated, this is an ordinance that would allow modular building methods in the City of Montrose. They're currently limited to the same zones that manufactured housing is allowed in. That's the R5, R6, and MHR. And manufactured housing is more commonly known as like a single wide or a double wide. Modular construction methods are something different. They... The only thing they have in common is that they are both constructed in a factory, but modular can be assembled in basically any configuration, looks just like site-built housing, and meets the same or exceeds the building standards of manufactured housing. So as I said, our manufactured housing regulations will basically stay the same. So the single wide, double wide rules will apply to those three zones I mentioned. In addition, modular housing quality control will have like a kind of a final oversight in the form of a PD plan, which requires noticing of the neighbors. So there'll be an opportunity to vet the design of any of these buildings before they go in.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion from council? Clara, any comments on this? In the audience, any comments? All right, then we're ready for motion, I believe.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2493 on second reading as presented.
I'll second.
We'll second.
And that passes unanimously. And number nine, 2020 annual annexation report and three-mile plan. City council consideration of the City of Montrose 2020 annual annexation report and three-mile plan. Again, senior planner Gary Baker, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've gone over the annexation plan in detail at the previous work session, and I think in summary, the annexation plan is needed to retain the city's authority to annex. It's not a specific plan to annex in any particular location, but it preserves our authority to annex within the three-mile area when a landowner may approach the city with that request.
Questions, comments from council? And I would say just for the record and for the audience here and out in TV land, that we have discussed this thoroughly. We've seen maps at the work session and at our last meeting, so we're just proceeding this evening. Clara, anything you'd like to add to this?
None at all, sir.
Thank you. And any comment from the audience?
I have a question.
Please come to the microphone, state your name and address, please.
Yvonne Meek, 216 North Stowe, Apartment 1B. My question is, when those areas are annexed, do the property owners or tenants now have voting rights?
Yes, they would have voting rights.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks for the question. Any more public comment? Seeing none, we'll proceed with a motion maybe.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the 2020 annual annexation report and the three-mile plan as presented.
I'll second.
And that is unanimous. Item number 10, ordinance 2494, first reading. City council consideration of ordinance 2494 on first reading. An ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, repealing and replacing Title III, Chapter VI of the Official Code of the City of Montrose regarding pretreatment program regulations for industrial users. Utilities Manager David Brees, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, what we're discussing is the recommendation to make some changes to our municipal code dealing with the industrial pretreatment program. Industrial pretreatment program is an EPA mandated program that is designed to protect industry from releasing discharges through the sanitary sewer system that pass through the wastewater treatment plant or impair the wastewater treatment plant and result in pollution in our rivers. So ultimately, what this is doing is it's protecting the Yoncompadre River for all of its uses that are designated by the state. The ordinance changes are fairly significant in volume because there's a lot of EPA required language that's required in this that were as a result of some changes in EPA regulations about 15 years ago. And we've been kind of floating underneath the radar of EPA and stuff. And with our latest NPDS permit that was renewed last year, the state required us to update our pretreatment regulations. Really, not a lot of impact on our... any of our businesses because we've only have... currently have one industrial pretreatment customer, and we've reviewed that and the changes for them aren't... there's no significant changes to them. And it would primarily be if we had new industry moving into town, that we would have to make sure that they're meeting the requirements, same as they would for any other community. So that's pretty much all I have. If there's any questions, I'd be willing to answer them.
And I will conduct a hearing and start with any audience comments. Seeing none, I'll move to council. Any questions, comments from council?
David, I assume that this is something that we have to do. Right?
If we want to maintain a permit to discharge our effluent from our wastewater treatment plant in the Yoncompadre River, we have to do it, yes.
We have to do it. It's a mandate.
Yes.
Thank you.
So I just have a question. The one business that it affects, did they have an opportunity to see this or are they aware of it?
We have talked to them about that. We've looked at it specifically for them and stuff. And again, that business is leaving town in about 14 months now, I think. So I'm not sure that their...
Okay.
Interest was real significant.
I get it. All right, thank you very much.
Any other comments, questions from council? Clara?
None at all.
Seeing none, I close the hearing, and I would entertain a motion, please.
I'd make a motion to pass ordinance 2494 on first reading as presented.
I'll second that.
Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Number 11, Resolution 2020-01. City council consideration of Resolution 2020-01, a resolution of the City of Montrose, Colorado, granting a franchise to Black Hills Colorado Gas Incorporated on the April 2020 municipal election. City Attorney Stephen Alcorn, please.
Perfect conversation to have on an 18-degree night is providing natural gas. So Black Hill Energy some time ago purchased the franchise agreement allowing them to provide natural gas to Montrose. We are at the end of that 20-year agreement, and the charter requires all utility franchise agreements to go to a vote of the people. So what is before you today is the agreement we have with Black Hills Energy to grant them the right to provide natural gas to Montrose residents for the next 20 years. It is a non-exclusive agreement. However, they currently are the only one providing us natural gas. And I think overall, we have been quite pleased with the services they've provided. We do have a... There is going to be a larger presence from Black Hills Energy, but the weather snowed them in on the front range. We do have one individual representative who I think would be great to call forward because I know at work session, there is a few questions that council had of the company So if you'd introduce yourself and read your name and address into the record.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Christopher Di Munro. I'm the operations supervisor for Black Hills Energy. Address 2183 East Main is our office here in Montrose. And...
Hi, this is Carly West. I just called in.
Oh, there's my saving grace right there.
Hi, Carly.
There are angels, see? They do exist.
I tell you, you're one of those people that don't like public speaking, and Carly's pretty good at it.
Yeah, thank you. Carly, I'll go ahead and start real quick, if you don't mind. I just wanted to say that Black Hills Energy is looking forward to continuing our partnership with the town and providing safe, reliable gas to our customers.
Thank you. Carly, Dave Bowman here. Any comments for us? Carly?
Oh, sorry. Just want to say thank you for your work on a new franchise agreement. We appreciate the hard work that went into it to this point, and we look forward to working with you through the election in April for a successful ballot measure.
Thank you. And any public comment, questions from the audience on this? Seeing none, I'll turn it to council.
No questions about this. So we approve the franchise agreement, but then it goes to voters on the municipal ballot to approve that?
Yes, they do. And I think we should probably ask Carly at work session, there was some... A touch of panic, you know, at the thought of, you know, what happens if the voters vote no, and then all of a sudden, you know, we don't have anybody supplying us natural gas. And one of the things that came up is council wanted to know, does Black Hills do any promotion of this or any advertising, anything to increase public awareness of the need to approve this? So Carly, is that something you can answer?
Absolutely. So first off, just weighed any concern about being without gas, just in case the ballot initiative were to not pass. We are still required and want to be the gas provider for the City of Montrose. So even if the ballot measure were to fail, we wouldn't change anything about our service. We would just come back to the table with the city to discuss why we think the initial initiative failed and how we think we can improve the ballot measure or improve the franchise agreement to be more amenable to the Montrose public. So we would go back to the drawing board, figure it out, but under no circumstances would we stop the flow of gas. In terms of promoting passage of the measure, we're scheduled next week to speak in front of the forum to talk about the ballot measure. We'll be working with the Montrose Economic Development Corporation to also promote the measure and provide information through their membership. And we'll evaluate ongoing needs leading up to the ballot measure or towards the election to determine what the need is in terms of advertising, but we'll more than likely do some social media promotion and other advertising as needed.
Thank you.
Thank you. As a clarification for something that Carly said, and hi there, Carly, this is Judy Ann. Yes, Carly and Chris will both be coming to the Wednesday morning forum that we hold at 8:00... that is held. Barbara and I just happen to be involved with it. Wednesday mornings at 8:00 at CMU Montrose campus. And yes, February 12th will be dedicated to Black Hills, and they will be telling us everything you ever want to know, so show up for forum.
And I'll also add that when the City of Delta had their franchise agreement up on the ballot last year, we wrote an op-ed for the newspaper that was very successful in helping spread information about what a franchise agreement is and why voters should vote in favor of it. So we'll definitely be looking to see if that's an opportunity that we have with the Montrose Daily Press as well.
Thank you. Any other comments? Chris, Carly?
Do you guys have any other questions? Obviously, I'm local, available. If you guys have any questions or concerns about what we're doing, how we're operating, be happy to ask, answer.
Thank you. And Clara, any questions?
I have a comment.
Please.
I would... I would assume that since Black Hills Colorado Gas is the only provider of gas... At the moment, I would believe so, that it wouldn't come up as a problem for the residents of our town since the current precedent stance that we... they've already provided it. And if they do a good job, why would we change it? So I don't think it'll be much of a problem.
Thank you. And if council's ready, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-01 as presented.
I'll second. Okay, I'll second it.
And please vote. And that passes unanimously. So I guess I want to make sure that everybody understands on April 7, there will be an election in the City of Montrose. We will be electing three city councilors, and we will also be voting on a franchise to decide whether the citizens of the City of Montrose want to keep Black Hills Energy and what we're going to do if you don't. So it's not an endorsement, but...
Anybody that's interested, the language for the ballot is in our packet. And so people can look at that on the web if they're curious and see what the ballot language is going to look like.
All right. And I would... I guess we've already done... we're all set to go. Number 12, 2020-02. City council consideration of Resolution 2020-02, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Montrose, Colorado, authorizing the filing of a community development block grant application in order to fund economic development opportunities for persons of low and moderate incomes within the City of Montrose, Colorado, authorizing the city manager to execute the grant contract with DOLA, and authorizing city staff to act in connection with the CDBG grant application following CDBG regulations and DOLA requirements, and to provide such additional information as may be required by DOLA. And I'll take Grant Coordinator Kendall Kramer, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Once again, I come before the City Council today to discuss a resolution for you to consider to file a community development block grant application with the Colorado Department of Local Affairs on behalf of the Black Canyon Boys and Girls Club. The Black Canyon Boys and Girls Club has been a vital part of our community for over 20 years and has provided hundreds of children with lifelong character and career-building skills. The more than 600 children from Montrose and Aletha who attend the club are provided the opportunity to learn about careers, develop decision-making and leadership skills, create personal goals, build an awareness of how to be self-sufficient adults, strengthen social and interpersonal skills, and are introduced to the value of the arts. The club has outgrown its current facility and now has a two-year waiting list for current club... for club members, new club members. In order to accommodate new growth, the club has been actively fundraising for quite some time to expand its footprint and build a new facility that will serve our community for years to come. To date, the club has raised over $730,000 towards a new building in campus, which will include a large gym, outdoor spaces, and playgrounds, a modern tech lab, music room, pre-teen dedicated space, and secure entrance, among other amenities. The expansion will double to triple the club's daily attendance. The new facility will be located on the southeast corner of 6700 in Niagara Road. The club wishes to apply for $600,000 in community development block funds to assist with constructing the new facility. In order to be eligible for CDBG funds, the applicant must meet the federal HUD requirement of its beneficiaries being 51% low to moderate income means. Currently, 52.54% of the members are low to moderate... are of low to moderate income. After verification of eligibility with the Department of Local Affairs, the Black Canyon Boys and Girls Club is an eligible sub-recipient of this grant. The club will be required to maintain at least 51% low to moderate income beneficiaries for at least five years. The club must also have a fiscal sponsor to apply. As you're aware, with past grants with our community nonprofits, they are not eligible to go directly to the state to receive these funds. They must go through a unit of local government. The City of Montrose regularly partners with our nonprofit organizations to sponsor and administer community development block grants, which strengthen our community and serve vulnerable populations. As the fiscal sponsor, the City of Montrose commits to completing the environmental review, ensuring procurement aligns with CDBG requirements, submitting quarterly, annual, and final reports, and serving as a liaison to the Colorado Department of Local Affairs. The total estimated cost of this project is between $3.5 and $4 million, and will be funded in part by fundraising efforts, which they... which are ongoing. The CDBG grants an impending USDA loan. The City of Montrose has no cash obligation to this project. However, the city will contribute staff time for the grant administration, including the environmental review and quarterly reporting, as previously mentioned. The city seeks to support the capital funding needs of nonprofits in the community through the CDBG program. The CDBG program brings outside money into our community that serves low-to-moderate-income earning households. If not for the CDBG program and the support of the city, these projects may be delayed or never pursued. Other recent examples of projects that the city has sponsored to receive CDBG funding include the Center for Mental Health. That project is currently underway with replacing the roof and HVAC on the Crisis Walk-In Center on Cascade. Maslow Academy, The Pick Place, and Sharing Ministries. Upon a successful grant award, the city and Black Canyon Boys and Girls Club will enter into a memorandum of understanding, an MOU. Again, the resolution before you authorizes the filing of this grant. If the grant is successful, it authorizes the city manager to execute the grant contract and for city staff to administer the grant. That being said, the grant application will be on file beginning next week, Monday through Thursday, 7:00 a.m. till 6:00 p.m. at 433 South First Street, Montrose, Colorado, which is the building across the street, City Hall. I'd also like to notice that Lori Sharp is here, who's my colleague and working on the grant application, and of course, the executive director of the Boys and Girls Club, Bud Taylor, if you have any questions for them as well. With that, I can take questions.
Thank you. I will open up a hearing, and with that, I will... I'm going to start with the audience, and then I'll come to council. So if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this grant, now's your time.
Dave Frank, 2866 Foxtail Drive, Montrose. I'd like to speak in support of this issue. I think that the Black Canyon Boys and Girls Club is a great asset to Montrose. I think the expansion of their facilities will have a very positive impact on our community as well as providing a much-needed service of daycare for a lot of kids. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? Seeing none, I will turn it to council. And any questions, comments from council, please?
Okay, I just wanted to confirm and sort of reiterate that the money that comes from this grant is just passed through as far as the city budget goes. It comes in and goes out, and we handle it for them, but doesn't represent any revenue for us or expenses.
That is correct, and it's my understanding that it's actually reflected as revenues on the city side, but it is money that just passes through and is given to the Boys and Girls Club upon receipt of their invoices and show that they've paid. So it's on a reimbursement basis.
Perfect. All right, thanks.
Also, at my understanding, there's no city expense to this, except for your time.
That is correct.
You are so invaluable, right?
So yes, that's correct. This time, there is no obligation on behalf of the city. At some point in the future, there may be a request for permit waiver fees for sewer and tap, but that's not before you tonight. This is simply for filing the grant application, and at this point, no obligation on behalf of the city, other than my time.
Thank you.
Clara, any comments?
I would just like to say... I would just like to say I would pass this resolution because at the end of the day, if we have a new Boys and Girls Club that is larger, it could also be an incentive for more people to come be residents of our county. And it is... filing the grant is no city expense, which essentially could mean that at the end of the day, we would gain revenue from the long-term implications.
Thank you very much. Good comments. And again, I want to remind people that at the end of December, when you look at the revenues for the city, it's going to show $600,000 that is revenue, that is just money that flows through. We collect it, we give it to a contractor, Boys and Girls Club, whoever gets this particular amount of money to get that facility constructed. But it's not like all of a sudden, we got $600,000 and we don't know what to do with it. We know exactly what to do with it. And with that, if there are no other questions, I'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-02 as presented.
Second.
Please vote. And that passes unanimously. And yes, I know I forgot to close the hearing, but we're okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Close now. And number 13, intergovernmental agreement with Montrose Recreation District. City council consideration of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Montrose and the Montrose Recreation District regarding shared services. And again, Grant Coordinator Kendall Kramer, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Once again, presenting to you the revised intergovernmental agreement with the Montrose Recreation District. I provided to you earlier printouts with some of the changes that weren't exactly included in the most recent packet. These changes were discussed at... These changes were discussed at our work session. For the exception, under one, on the last bullet point on this, which provides clarification about the Rec. District, their board members actually don't get paid, so they don't have pay stubs to provide to the city in order to receive a discount at the golf course. But we'll go through that in just a few minutes. This Montrose Recreation District IGA, again, it comes before the City Council on an annual basis. Over the last three or four months, I've worked with the Rec. District, Mary Steinbach and Jeremy Master, who are here tonight to refine this agreement to make sure that it meets the needs of both parties. We think that we've developed a strong intergovernmental agreement that continues our strong relationship and partnership that we have and benefits both parties, as well as the community, and obviously saves tax dollars for both entities. There are no major changes to this year's agreement as discussed at the work session. Some of the minor changes include removing herbicide application for non-irrigated turf areas on district properties. That's something the Rec. District has already been doing and kind of took over, so it's no longer needed by our city facilities department or public works department. Clarification on parking lot sweeping services provided to the district. The Holly Park, of course, is being renovated, so that parking lot will fall under their, under park sweeping, excuse me, parking lot sweeping, once it is finished. Parking lot sweeping is done in accordance with the city's sweeping policy, so they will receive as part of this agreement two sweeps as kind of free, and any additional sweeps, they'll pay for. And so they'll have clean parking lots. Specialized equipment and hourly billing rates have been listed in Schedule A. In Schedule A, there's, on occasion, they rent equipment from the City of Montrose. We just wanted to put that in there and clarify. Equipment such as the brush chipper, tractor and cutter, a backhoe loader. So we just put that equipment in there. That way, it's listed in Schedule A. The city shall bear all expenses related to the provision of facility services by the district for the benefit of the city. There's another clause or term in there that says that the MRD shall bear all expenses for the provision of facility services by MRD for the benefic, benefit of MRD. So this is kind of the opposite of that, saying basically if we ask for services from the Rec. District, we're gonna pay them for it. When they ask for services, they're gonna pay us for it. Just providing clarification. Removal of city responsibility to perform Cerise Fields scheduling for the events that go on down there, as well as athletic teams and so forth. The district has traditionally been responsible for scheduling, so we just put that on them since they've already been doing it. Clarification on the schedule for restroom cleaning at Cerise Fields. Making sure that the restroom facilities are open throughout the year for when they have activities down there. Let me go to the page here. And let's see here. Essentially making sure that the restrooms are open when they need to be, as well as the cleaning. The city provides the cleaning on the weekend, the MRD during the week, during activities down there and during their playing season. The district also receives a discount at the Black Canyon Boys and Girls Club, or excuse me, at the Black Canyon Golf Course. A lot of Black Canyon groups tonight. And so clarification on that, on district employee board access there. That was one of the things that was mentioned. Again, the, the board of the MRD does not receive a paycheck, so they can't provide check stubs in order to get that discount. So simply, they're just gonna provide us a list, MRD, of who their board members are. Pretty simple there. The city will let the district know when an employee is terminated or hired. New employees will be able to join the Community Recreation Center at the city's annual pass rate. The city does have a discounted annual pass rate, and this is in exchange for the collection of sales tax revenues for the Rec. District and for the construction of the Montrose Recreation Center. And so just making sure that if there are new employees that are brought on through the year or those who are terminated for any reason, that communication is better between both entities, and new people can get on and receive that discount. Updated credit amounts for the city trash and recycling services and administration of sales tax revenues. In Schedule A, we listed the recycling and trash services that the city provides to the Rec. District, so all the way down to the trashcans that we pick up at the Rec. Center, Holly Park, McNeil and the Field House. So clarifying those. The automatic contract renewal language was removed from this agreement simply because it was the request to bring it before council on an annual basis. Some IT changes. The city may provide cloud-based backup storage to the district at the request of MRD, as well as virus checking and protection on all district computers attached to the city network. For our facilities, the city will prepare a monthly report and provide a statement of repairs, parts, labor and supplies to the district for each work order by the fourteenth of the following month. And Schedule A was also updated to reflect current hourly billing rates. And the hourly rates that are listed here are based on the position's hourly burden rate with a three percent overhead. Rates are established following City Council, the approval of the annual budget. With that being said, a lot of information thrown at you. I can answer questions, and we're really excited again to work with the Rec. District.
Thank you. And I can accept public comment if there's any comment about this. Mary?
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. Mary Steinbach, Montrose Recreation District Executive Director. It is absolutely our privilege to be presenting this this evening, and we appreciate the work that Kendall and Ann and the rest of the staff put into this to make sure that we have, are able to realize a reduction of duplication of services and payments, make the best use of the resources of the city of, for the people, the residents of Montrose. The Board of Directors of the Montrose Recreation District did approve this agreement on January twenty-third, and they wholeheartedly approve of the concept, as you know. And we're excited to continue moving forward in enabling our strong partnership and figuring out new ways and creative ways and great things that we can do together for all of our residents.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Counsel?
I'd just like to thank Kendall for the work that he did on this and outlining the changes. Made it very easy to go through and understand where we were.
I, I just wanna say that it's a great partnership. You bring tremendous well-being and, and other things to our community, opportunities for our youth and, and even retired folks like me. So I really wanna thank you for the services you give the city. And I think this is a great way to maximize our tax dollars, putting them to use in the most efficient way that we can. And so thanks to you too, Kendall, for all the work on this.
Thank you, Counsel.
Yeah, I'll, I will reiterate that it is basically, at the end of the day, a cost savings to the taxpayers by having these two entities cooperate and work through this agreement. So good work.
Thank you.
Clara?
I, as, as one of the people who use the facilities that the Rec. District provides, I am grateful to see that the Rec. District and the city themselves are cooperating in order to see higher efficiencies within our town. So I'd like to thank everyone for this, essentially this increase in efficiency within our town.
Thank you. And seeing no other comments, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Montrose and the Montrose Recreation District regarding shared services as presented.
I will second it.
Please vote. And that passes unanimously. And item number fourteen, job creation and business development agreement with Geiser Technologies LLC. City Council consideration of an incentive grant agreement between the City of Montrose and Geiser Technology LLC. City Manager Bill Bell, please.
Hi. I'm filling in for Chelsea Rostie, who could not be here tonight. But I think we'll, we'll get through it. We have several knowledgeable people in the room. We have Sandy Head here from Montrose Economic Development Corporation and Jonathan Valasteros. Did I say that correctly? Excellent. From Geiser Technologies. So I'll run through the agreement that's in our, our packet. Just for everybody's benefit, the City Council and some URA board members did a meet and greet with Geiser, feels like several months ago now. And then we had a negotiations meeting, an executive session, as well as the last work session and a public meeting. So now the agreement is before City Council for action tonight. It's on page one eighty-two in the packet is where we start the agreement. And so if, depending how you, you want me to start with this, or would you like to have Jonathan tell a little bit, just in general, about his business, and then we can get into the agreement? That's up to you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh yeah, I'd be happy to hear from Jonathan. And then I think for council, I'd like to go through this page by page. I understand that there are several that have questions. I have quite a few questions. And I think the best way to do it is to start at the beginning of the contract and work through it to the end and signify if you have a question on any particular page. Jonathan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Thank you, Bill and staff. Geiser Technologies is a company that is out to make the most of every drop of water in situations where water is very limited. We have several products that are currently getting launched in the consumer outdoor gear space. Very exciting. Planning to launch in a hundred forty-six REI co-op stores with a hot portable shower that uses less than a gallon of water. It's something that, coming from outdoor retailer, which is one of the largest trade shows in the country of the year, has generated quite a bit of excitement. We are originally born and bred in Austin, Texas, and decided that we would like to go ahead and move our manufacturing center, as well as our headquarters here to Montrose, considering the wealth of talent and also the available opportunities that are coming with coming here to rural Colorado, as well as Colorado's in general. I had the delightful opportunity with working with several of you, including with Bill, and understanding what it is that we can do to make not only Montrose, but even the state of Colorado, a beacon of hope for one of our most precious resources, and also generate some real exciting new innovations in, in areas that really need it most, such as outdoor gears for military, for senior living citizens, and also natural disaster relief. So I, of course, open counsel to any questions, and I'm really excited to be here. Thank you very much.
I'll go ahead and open up to the audience for comments. And as the council discusses this, we'll figure out a way to have a conversation between council and the audience. So if there's anybody that would like to speak right now, please come to the microphone.
Dave Stockton, three zero zero nine Cook Drive. I read the, the package that's available to the public and that you're gonna be reviewing here in a few minutes. And I have a fundamental understanding of what Geiser is asking for. Before I get into that, you know, the, the city is doing a lot in terms of business development with Montrose Urban Renewal Authority, and we're investing a lot of money up on the, on the northern side. And in general, I'm supportive of that because those endeavors are really gonna be a benefit to the city as a whole and everyone that lives in the city. But with respect to Geiser, I think that this is more of a job incentive type thing in terms of payroll. If I understand what's before you tonight, you know, we're loaning Geiser a hundred fifty thousand dollars, and then we're giving them relief on that loan at five thousand dollars per headcount. That does not really provide a benefit to the city overall. It's gonna benefit a handful of people, and I would ask you to deny this grant going forward, based on my understanding of what's going on. If I'm incorrect with my understanding, I'll withdraw my concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yvonne?
Yvonne Meek. I live at two sixteen North Stowe, apartment one B. I also own the Masonic Building at five eleven East Main Street in downtown. I agree, I think this is a great idea, a great project, a great business idea. But as a taxpayer and a business creator myself, I absolutely disagree with incentivizing companies to pay, for us to pay their salaries to other people. I, I think the taxpayers, there's so many people in Montrose downtown and around that have invested their own money into creating businesses and job opportunities for other people that, as I said with Mayfly in twenty, in twenty sixteen, I do not like these incentive packages at all. And I don't think it's fair to the rest of the community to keep supporting them with, with tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? All right, seeing none, let's try to go through this contract, because it, it is a quite lengthy contract. And I think there are parts of this contract that, at least for me, raise great concerns about using taxpayer money. Any questions on page two? Page three?
Wait a second, slow down.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So page two is definitions.
Okay.
Okay, right, okay.
Page three? So this contract will take effect if it's signed, and it would last through July thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. Page four. I think the first thing I'd like to cite on page four is that the total amount of money that Geiser Systems would be receiving is one hundred ninety-nine thousand five hundred dollars. And that, and we'll go through that in a little bit, exactly how that's broken down. There's three different parts of that, and when we get to that page, we'll talk about that. But bottom line, the amount of money is almost two hundred thousand dollars. I've got a question on page four, number seven. Paragraph, or section B, section, paragraph three. Available funds contingency and termination. The city is prohibited by law from making fiscal commitments beyond the term of the city's current fiscal year. Therefore, grantee's compensation is contingent upon the continuing availability of city appropriations as provided in the Colorado special provisions set forth below. If city funds are not appropriated or otherwise become unavailable to fund this grant, the city may immediately terminate this grant in whole or in part without further liability in accordance with provisions herein. And Steve or Bill, can you explain what that is and how that impacts our budget?
That is the wonderful gift of Tabor. So that's a Tabor clause. And for anybody that does business with Colorado governments, it's a bit of a leap of faith because what that does is it gives the city out and to the detriment of the contracting party. So that contract is, or that clause is in just about every city and state contract, be it for a photocopier rental that, you know, goes, you know, exceeds multiple years to something like this, that we cannot commit a future council to funds, to spending funds that may not be there. And a company like Geiser just has to, to some degree, have faith that, that a government entity isn't gonna back out on them. They would have some recourse going to court where saying, well, no, the money is there. The just, the new council just chose not to send, spend it that way. So they would have protection there. But say if the sales tax revenue, you know, plummeted due to a new recession or something like that, and the, the city can show that we are cutting all sorts of different programs, different expenditures, then the court may side with the city saying, no, the money really doesn't exist.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on that page? Page five? Page five, eight, "Reporting and notification. Letter B, litigation reporting. Within 10 days after being served of any pleading in illegal action filed with a court or administrative agency related to this grant or which may affect the grantee's ability to perform its obligations hereunder, the grantee shall notify the city of such action and deliver copies of such pleadings to the city's principal representative as identified herein. If the city's principal is not then serving, such notice and copy shall be delivered to the city's attorney's office." Want to talk about that, please?
I would love to. This is great, more fun than I think that city councils are supposed to have, is getting into this deep. But it, it sets forth how Geiser would sue us and how they, we would be notified. The principal of any municipal government is the mayor, and so that is the, the person that normally gets sued. But since mayors are a little bit harder to track down than the city attorneys, that we give, it's pretty traditional to have a clause like that in there, that they can serve the city attorney instead of the mayor.
Okay, thank you. Anybody question, page six? Page eight? Page nine? Okay.
Nine is remedy, so.
Because I've got a question on page nine, 14A. I'll read the whole paragraph. "If the grantee fails to perform any of its obligations hereunder with such diligence as is required by this grant, the city may notify the grantee of such nonperformance in accordance with the provisions herein. If grantee thereafter fails to promptly cure such nonperformance within the cure period, the city at its option may terminate this entire grant or such part of this grant as to which there has been a delay or a failure to properly perform. Exercised by the city of this right shall not be deemed a breach of its obligation hereunder. The grantee shall continue performance of this grant to the extent not terminated. If any, the amount of the grant shall be dispersed, dispersed shall immediately become due and payable to the city and event that the grantee relocates all or a portion of its operations from Montrose to another city-state prior to July 31, 2025, and the resulting relocation results in the grantee not being able to maintain its operations. In section, paragraph three of this exhibit A, the grantee shall notify the city within 30 days from the time the grantee fails to maintain its operations in Montrose." Let's talk about that.
And your question is?
My, my first question is, right now, Geiser is renting a facility for, they've got like nine employees or something, and we'll find out later in this document, they're suggesting that in the next five years, they're going to have 98 employees. If they relocate out of the city, and we've already paid them, does that just make more work for you, Stephen? And if we had to sue them because they didn't give us the money back, do we have the adequate legal staff to handle that without having to bring on more legal staff?
I think it's good, this one is probably going to take both Bill and I. So what remedies are, the remedies clause is how you fix the, how you fix a disagreement. So an example of a remedy could be, later on, most of their obligations are laid out in the exhibit, one of which is quarterly reports. And there's dates that they have to have quarterly reports given. If they miss a quarterly report, we can't just turn around and, you know, take them to court and say, we want out. We have to give them an opportunity to remedy our problem. So what we would say is, hey, guys, you know, you owe us a quarterly report, and they have a reasonable amount of time to fix that. Now, a material obligation such as moving operations, that's a biggie for us. And we would be seeking prorated amounts back. Would we probably hire outside counsel? Yes. But the wonderful thing about this is we'd be also seeking attorney fees and compensation.
But it could be, and if we don't get those attorney fees, we've just spent more money.
If we don't win attorney fees, we'd probably end up paying their attorney fees. That means we lost.
Right.
Yeah, but this appears to me to be pretty good protection against something like that happening. I mean, the city's pretty well covered because we could, you know, if, if a study's right here that they can't leave Montrose, then we can recover everything that we've not already been paid back. Is that true?
Correct. This is a very skeptical, well, first of all, this is, is for the most part, Oedet's, O edits, contract. So it, it's the state version of the Montrose Economic Development Corporation. So this is, this has been litigated before in other cities and at state levels, and every time you go to court, you end up making little tweaks on it. So this is a very skeptical contract. The, hope for the best and prepare for the worst is kind of what this contract is.
When you say skeptical contract, you, I mean, I think you went on to say, hope for the best, prepare for the worst, but this is a pretty tightly written contract to protect the city's interests.
Yes, and, and I say it's a skeptical contract because in some ways, it's written with, I don't like to say it, but it's written with an eye towards the business failing. So I get paid to be a naysayer and a skeptic because that's how we get protected. So yes, it's an agreement that in, I don't want to say is unfair to, it's quite favorable to the city because we are accepting some risk here. And the, and the gaining business is getting a pretty big benefit that they wouldn't get it otherwise. So when we are working with taxpayer dollars, I think it's important that we more than hedge our bets to protect this because we want to be able to reclaim this money and be able to do it again in other times, or make sure we get some financial bang for our buck.
Right, so we are taking considerable lengths to protect the taxpayer dollar that we're investing in this particular company. I think you said it pretty, yeah, okay.
So if, if we give them this $199,500, and in nine months, they go bankrupt or they move, how do we recover that money?
Well, yeah, it would be, it's a, it would be a fairly easy lawsuit, other than the fact that we're dealing with bankruptcy courts.
I mean, if they don't have any money, and they've already spent our money, how do we get it back? You don't have to answer that.
That's a risk in any business.
Well, but it's different for a for-profit business and a government. Page 10, any questions?
I just want to add to that, though, just quickly. In this particular case, we know the business already has a contract to fulfill with REI, so they have a buyer for the product that they're creating in our community. So it's not your average startup that has yet to have any performance contracts or any revenue coming in.
And we've reviewed that contract?
We've looked at the agreement that they have for the number, order of widgets.
You have looked at that?
Yeah.
Yvonne, let us go through the contract, and then I'll be happy to have you, if, if you'll please be patient with us for a couple of minutes. All right, any questions on page 10? 13?
Going fast.
Okay.
Yeah, so this whole 12 and 13 is just kind of general stuff that, yeah, mostly definitions.
I think, right, right now, it says, fund, I'd like to, number 18B, "Fund availability. Financial obligations of the city payable after its current fiscal year are contingent upon funds for that purpose being appropriated, budgeted, and otherwise made available." Is, is what, is that, right now, we don't have any money in our budget allocated to incentives, as I recall, from the budget meetings last fall. Is that correct? I, I believe that council decided not to put any money in that line item because we didn't know how much we would spend, and there was concern about businesses knowing how much we would have to spend. Is that?
Yeah, we, we decided that we would take them as a case-by-case basis and analyze the requests at that time, and then utilize the undesignated fund balance to fund any type of business development.
So this would show up as like a supplemental budget at the end of the year?
Correct. If whatever were to be approved tonight would be the action, and then when we do the supplemental budget in December, that would show up there.
Okay. But it's coming out of an undesignated fund balance that could be used for many different things.
Correct, and it would, and Shani, correct me if I'm wrong, if she's here, but I don't think she is. The, the only time we do a supplemental is if our general fund were to go over budget. So it wouldn't necessarily have to go to a supplemental budget. That's only if we're over budget at the end of the year.
Okay.
As a whole general fund.
Okay.
14?
14.
And that, and that fund availability clause is the Tabor clause as well. So Tabor clause is in, in the agreements multiple times.
16 is blank, that's easy.
I've a lot of questions on that one.
17 is signatures, as is 18, and page 19.
So that shows the table of reports that Stephen was allusing, alluding to. Oh.
Do these quarterly reports line up with the same reports that the, the state Office of Economic Development require?
Yeah, so what Stephen was mentioning earlier about O Edit, that's the Office of Economic Development International Trade at the state level. This mirrors very close, closely to the state's agreements for these same type of things. That's what we did with the Mayfly Job Retention Agreement, working with Sandy. And so we've tried to mirror the state's language on a lot of these things. And so when we did that job creation incentive package, we wanted to have a way for the city to be able to track the creation of those jobs that were being incentivized. And so the Suter reports that the business provides to the state on a quarterly basis show all of their employees and what salaries they're being paid, which is basically all their, their record and timekeeping. And so we get copies of those from the business and analyze those to make sure that they're in compliance with the agreement, and that, that's how we determine what job has been a new job that's created compared to the baseline, and how much they paid for that job, because the incentive agreement is three different tiers based on the amount of salary, which is outlined in the statement of work. And so we use those Suter reports to show, is this a net new job? And if it is, how long have they had that job, because they have to maintain it for 12 months? And how much did they pay the person in that position? And so we utilize these quarterly reports, and so those are lined up with that.
And the, the net job is important because if they hire Barbara, Barbara's argumentative, doesn't get along real well with her coworkers, so that she's let go, and then they hire Dave, they don't get $5,000 for Barbara and $5,000 for you, they, because it has to be a continuous position. So, and then it stipulates how much time they have to fill that position, 60 days to fill the, the position, you know, figuring from the time that person A resigns, advertises to the job, interviews the job, and get the new one on. So on some of the others that we've done in the past, we've actually denied a position because it's, there's been too long of a gap there, that, you know, four months is too much of a gap, you know, that, you know, you go back to ground zero, or to zero on that.
I'm curious where the 98 net new permanent jobs came from. You know, I, I was looking at the packet from Mayfly yesterday, and it seemed to me in that packet, it said that Mayfly was going to create 54 jobs in five years. We know that they're asking for an extension, which means they must not have achieved that. Is, is there a single business that has come to Montrose even in the last 10 years that has created 98 jobs in five years? And where did that number come from?
I think that came from Jonathan, so I would have him answer, maybe talk about your job creation plans.
Mention the types of jobs, too. Jonathan?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, thank you, city council. First and foremost, it comes from a go-to-market strategy that includes certain volumes of product that are being sold. And that go-to-market strategy, which drives the staffing as well as the financial model, will ultimately, you know, was ultimately reviewed by a variety of industry experts as well as advisors, and said there's plenty of room for upside. The kind of jobs that we're going to be hiring, a bulk of that will be manufacturing, but also another bulk will be high-paying, quality jobs such as engineering, that we will need to continue developing new products and launch new products in a variety of different industries. So the current flagship product that we have is the Geiser system. We'll need, we'll need technical support as well as quality control systems to push that forward, as well sustain the new technologies that will unfold with it. And then when we develop other technologies in which we've already got a fourth revision of a prototype called the Pup Scrub, and also a miniaturized version of our flagship product today, the Mini Geiser, we're going to be hiring more people to not only launch those products, but also provide the technical support behind it. So, and then over the course of the five years, we plan on going international. So one of the reasons why we decided to come to Colorado, and in particular to Montrose, is because of the tree, free trade zone agreements that are unfolding in this area, as well as the opportunity zone. And that's going to, of course, keep us here over the long term. But most importantly, over the course of the five years, we plan on exporting this product internationally. In fact, the idea was born in Australia, and a variety of distributors have already sent letters of interest and are very excited of launching this product in Australia. We also have several distributors that are very excited about launching this product in Canada. So we're actually ahead of schedule to our go-to-market strategy that I was alluding to, that shows the kind of progression of volumes that we need, as well as the headcount support. And I will just mention that currently, our staffing figures would show that we are supposed to be having six full-time jobs. We currently already have eight, just to keep up with this growing demand that's unfolding in areas that we plan on tapping into in the next couple of months as well as years. There's already been some demand and interest that we're already anticipating, and we have to account for. So, yeah, I don't know if that answers your question completely, but it's all based off of the volumes that we anticipate unfolding.
You mentioned manufacturing jobs. When you were here at a work session two weeks ago, you mentioned paying $12.75 an hour for your manufacturing jobs. When you came to our work session, you said that it would be in the neighborhood of $35,000 a year. $12.75 is 25.5. You're like 10 grand off. Explain that.
Of course, absolutely. So first and foremost, we are in this very interesting position where we are going from zero to hero. We were just a startup. We didn't have any previous revenue. We've identified a key real problem in the base camp and outdoor camping gear in general, and REI heard our insight as well as market validation. And REI heard our insight as well as market validation and said, "These guys have actually identified a real problem. Hot showers is something that they foresee really in big demand." Typically, they only launch a startup between five to maybe 35 stores. They are anticipating to launch us in 146. It just speaks to the kind of problem that we've identified and the creative way that we've solved it. Now, having said that, we're still in this really interesting position currently where we're still a startup and we're still in very much a tight cash flow position in which we have to make the most of every dollar and we have to maximize on our runway. Just to give you an example, everyone, including myself, is getting paid $1,275 an hour. I'm not making any more money than anyone else. In fact, I'm the last person to eat. I've actually skipped paychecks just to keep this company rolling so we can get on the other side of this product launch and this purchase order. So my crew eats first and as, and as we grow our company over the course of this year and achieve a successful launch, we anticipate, of course, not only enhancing those salaries for our crew, but also expanding on providing some outstanding benefits and making our company one of the best places to work for in the western slopes.
But right now, in the county of Montrose, our poverty rate is 20%, maybe more. About half our kids are on free and reduced lunch. I don't see how paying people $1,275 an hour begins to solve the problem of workforce housing, affordable housing. Right now, that's a real crisis for us. How, how does $1,275 help this community deal with the poverty we have?
Dave, I think you're missing the point here because this is a startup and I've worked with hundreds of startups in Silicon Valley and you have to start out with what you can afford to pay and you give these people ownership, part ownership in the company in terms of stock or whatever. And as the company gains sales and becomes more successful, he'll raise these salaries and these people will be among the best paid in Montrose.
I want to be clear.
Am I, am I close to right, Jonathan?
Miss, Mayor Bowman, I just want to share some perspective as well. That is, the $1,275 an hour is a temporary position. We, of course, want to launch a company that grows those salaries this year after we get on the other side of a successful product launch. With regards to the people who are hit hard economically, I have a lot of empathy for them. I've been living in the back of a van for two years. I've been putting all my rent money behind this company. And I can also state that I'm right now living in the back of a trailer, used, and I'm doing it on somebody's property. I know that pain and I know what that looks like. And I'm even willing to make sure that those people who are going through the same sweat and grind are able to eat before I do. And I'm in it to grind it out, knowing and having a lot of empathy along the way that this product actually can make a lot of difference for those people who are hit by hard times. Let's make no mistake, San Francisco rent prices, Denver rent prices, Austin, Texas rent prices, they're coming up. I look at people in the Walmart parking lot and I know what that was like because I lived there once. And so I want to make sure that my crew doesn't have to face those hard times again like I did. And I also, for those people who are there right now, they don't have a chance to reset in their life. This product will give them the opportunity to do that. And I'm really proud of, you know, being able to give people a means to enhance their life even though they cannot make ends meet and they're living in the back of a van because I was there once. So, right now, I understand that we're right now putting a lot of sweat equity in it. I, believe me, I've been putting on that sweat equity for a couple of years now. But I'm, but I'm really excited that this is going to be a growing story of success for not only our community, but also other communities around the world.
And I want to make it clear that this contract does not, this, we are not looking at incentivizing jobs paying $1,275 an hour. In fact, I'll, I'll read you exactly what it says in the contract. And that is that jobs of $49,973 a year would be incentivized at the $5,000 rate. Jobs of $46,129 would be incentivized at $4,000. And jobs of $42,285 would be incentivized at $3,000. So I just didn't want anyone to think we're talking about incentivizing jobs that pay $1,275 an hour.
Yeah, in fact, this agreement incentivizes me to increase the salaries, absolutely. Thank you for pointing that out.
I just want to mention, in addition to what Mayor Protem Bynum just stated, the contract on page, I think it looks like you're referring to page 20, also outlines what OEDIT considers the average annual wage rate for our Montrose County, and that's $38,441. And so those jobs that are being incentivized are higher than the average wage rate. And if, over the five-year period, they don't perform and, and create the jobs that they're predicting, anything they don't perform at the end of that period, they pay us for. And so we, the way this was drafted based on negotiations was a forgivable loan to be paid back via performance. And so if at the end, they weren't able to create that amount of jobs worth that amount of money, then they would owe us that pro-rata share back.
If they have the money to pay it back?
Yeah.
Basically, we're giving them a $200,000 interest-free, hoping they succeed. If they don't, really, the taxpayers of the city of Montrose end up holding the bag.
I think $155,000 of that, I think, is true. The $40,000 is a joint marketing effort with OBT. And so there would be tangible property that's being created, marketing Montrose, Colorado, on their packaging that goes out. And so we get a value for that. And then the other $4,500 is a lease arrangement to help with their lease through the end of the year. And so there's a, that's paid to the landlord, so there's a tangible property on that.
So we're paying their rent?
That was what was negotiated with City Council, yes, for the remainder of the year to help get them through that product delivery time with REI. But the statement you make about the risk associated, if they were to go bankrupt, they're going to owe us and we have to go after collections to get our $155,000 of that back with no, that's true. There is risk there.
And because we're mirroring the state's Office of Economic Development, these wages escalate up. They're based on, on the current, like you said, the average annual wage as recognized by that state office. So as, as wages change, the wages that we would be incentivizing also change. Right?
We, yes, so if, the way it's written right now is we're basing it on what the current is.
Okay, okay.
I don't believe there's an inflationary clause built in. Sandy's nodding her head.
Okay, so you base it on the current?
You could do that, but...
But you base it on the current and, and go from there? Okay, maybe that's easier to wrap everyone's head around, too.
It's hard to track, I think, every year. You'd have to do a rolling...
Well, we do that for rent. I mean, when we did the apartments for the Vine, we put a figure in there that changes every year based on, I guess, inflation or whatever. Why wouldn't we do that in this contract also? I mean, if, if, if it's difficult here, it should have been difficult for the apartments at the Vine, so I'm, I'm not real comfortable with that argument.
I think this one mirrors how the state does it.
Yeah, this is what OEDIT does. I don't know, do you know, Sandy, why OEDIT doesn't do it the other way?
Sandy Head, Montrose Economic Development Corporation, 1601 Oxbo Drive, Suite 360B. Thank you. The state is always, once they draft a contract, it's like a line in the sand. This is what the county average wage is today when the contract is written and then they track the jobs going forward. I was going to make some comments and I don't know if I should just do it now or just say that the state, this is how the state does it and we mirror that in many of our agreements just so it's consistent because Jonathan's also can be entering into agreements with the state and that gives him a, you know, a standard formula to go by. Do you want me to go any further or do you want me to sit down and come back up?
Whatever you'd like to say.
Well, you're still in the contract, so I don't want to mess up your flow, but I'll go ahead and speak. I just wanted to say that what, what the City Council is considering today is something MADC has done for over 30, 40 years and we call it a job performance contract. And what you do is you're investing in a company based on the fact that they have chosen your community to do business in and they're creating jobs. And Geyser Systems was launched out of the Gunnison Ice Lab. They received their training there. And the goal of the Ice Lab in Gunnison as well as the Telluride Venture Accelerator Program is to take brand-new startup companies and place them throughout the western slope. And Geyser had choices between Montrose and Grand Junction because Grand Junction is closer to the foreign trade zone, but when Jonathan found out Montrose will qualify for that, he gave Montrose the opportunity for this. We have, the state of Colorado has reviewed his business plan and in December, they granted him the Rural Jump Start designation. And that goes for, it gets renewed next January. We just had a hearing on that and it'll be extended for another four years. So you have a five-year program that's going to mirror the five-year program for the city of Montrose. But in that, he also gets a four rural jump start. He will get an abatement of state income tax and he does not have to withhold income tax on his employees, which will also give him the ability to increase those salaries. He does have an average salary that he expects to pay, but Jonathan and I have had a number of conversations over the last several weeks and he has a crew that's believing in him that are willing to accept lesser money right now as long as they can because they know at the end of the road, those salaries are going to come up. I did some math today. I also wanted to say that Colorado Lending Source, which is another funding source in Colorado, has reviewed his business plan and gave him a loan, as well as Region Nine in Durango has given Jonathan a loan after reviewing his business plan. And it was a fund that our Region Ten has ran out of funds for, so it was a collaborative effort. So you, when I, when I talked to the state earlier on when we were working with Region Nine, they, they so believe in what Jonathan's doing that they say, "We have to do whatever it takes to make this company launch and stay in Montrose." So I think that we're really blessed. Jonathan does have his lofty goals of how many people he's going to employ and we're sitting here in Montrose with a clock ticking for 14 months where we're going to have 400 employees out on the street looking for jobs. And the jobs that Jonathan have are going to be perfect jobs for them to move into. So we have a pool of employees for him. The performance-based program, as I said, MADC has worked on that for years, what we do, which I'll just plant a seed, if you get a company that promises 100 employees at the end of five years, they haven't reached that, the goal is, are they in Montrose? Are they buying goods and services? Are they creating jobs which creates wealth? And we extend those. We just amend the agreement and we extend it for another period of time because we want companies here and that's the goal. I did a multiplier on Jonathan's type of business and I wasn't able to get all the details on leases and stuff because I know he needs more room. But his payroll over, for the first five years, once he gets up to speed, which he should once these orders go out, because that's, it's a, it's an ebb and flow of cash at the very beginning, is going to be nearly $2 million in payroll. The last year, $358,000. The jobs he's creating in five years, if he has 43 jobs, that creates another 17 jobs in the community of Montrose through the other businesses that he's doing business with. So it is a multiplier effect. We totally support what Jonathan is doing and we have, we have, the, the state and other organizations have looked at the plan and believe in the business plan. It's always hard to start a business and anyone who's ever been in business knows there's times you don't take a salary, there's times when it gets really lean. But he has an incredibly exciting project, product that is going to bloom into other accessory products that will go into a lot more industry than outdoor recreation. And I think it's a blessing that he has chosen Montrose for the rural jump start in order for him to maintain that. He does have to be located in Montrose and I think that it would be, I would encourage the City Council to move forward with this and help us to build one new, exciting company in the community. When Mike Gordon came here in 1994, it was for 35 employees and we still are enjoying, he's up to, you know, they still are averaging 60 to 70 employees today. So I'll entertain any questions, but those were the highlights of what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Sandy. I think that's a good summary.
Thank you for your time and I'll come back if you want me to.
Stephen, I have a question. It says, "To be a full-time employee, individual must work in Montrose at least 32 hours a week." I would assume there will be some salespeople working here who may be traveling if they're housed here or live here in Montrose, but they spend a fair amount of time on the road? How does that relate with the 32 hours?
Their home base would be considered Montrose, so if it, if travel's required for work, that would still satisfy that. And 32 hours comes from the, the minimum number of hours before you become full-time for benefit purposes.
And other businesses like Mayfly that has a similar, they have salespeople that operate out of here, they benefit from it. They have salespeople that don't operate out of Montrose, they don't get the credit for that.
Jonathan, are you providing any kind of health insurance for your people?
Currently, no one, nor myself, isn't obtaining health insurance, but that is a thing that we plan on changing in the middle of this year.
Any other questions on page 20?
Oh, we're past that. Oh, I guess not, sorry.
How, how many of each one of these jobs, Jonathan, the $42,000, the $46,000, the $49,000, how many of each one of those do you anticipate creating?
In the upcoming year, we will have an operations supervisor for $56,000, marketing manager for $64,000, sales manager for $62,000, and a customer service rep at $43,000. And our assemblers and quality inspectors will be obtaining a salary of up to $35,000. In 2021, as reviewed by OEDIT, we're anticipating 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 10 jobs that are going to be over those margins in the agreement. In 2022, we foresee four jobs. And then in 2023, we foresee 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 additional jobs. They'll be well above those margins. Does that answer your question?
Yes, not real close to 98.
Well, 98 jobs are not, I mean, if you do the math, we're not incentivizing 98 jobs. If you do the math at $155,000...
I understand that.
Let me finish. At $155,000, if all of the jobs we incentivize were at the, at the $5,000 incentive, that would be 31 jobs total over that period. And if they were at the $3,000 incentive, there would be a total of just over 51 jobs. So we're not talking about incentivizing 98 jobs.
That I understand. My, my concern is the salary or the hourly level of the other people. And, and given the economics of our community, half the kids on free lunches, we, we talk all the time, we need more affordable housing, we need, we're going to build 72 units of low-income housing. My concern is all this really does to our community is add to people that are going to need government assistance of some kind. So the cost of this is, is way more than just what we're giving them and we're giving them the money for the jobs before they're even created. And we've never done that before and I'm not sure why we're doing it now.
Well, you're not sure why we're doing it now? We had a whole meeting about it where we talked about how we've done it in the past where we've given startup companies job creation incentives, but because we give them the job creation incentive after a year, for a company like Geyser who has a, a purchase order from REI and is trying to get things done on a really lean basis, that the best way to help them would be to, and I think this was creative thinking by our staff, we talked about it at length and we all chimed in. I'm seeing... about it at length, and we all chimed in, I'm seeing nods from my fellow counselors, that this was a way that we could offer that same incentive, not change it, except to offer it from, on the front end.
Well, I'm just trying to, if this is such a great idea, why does the city government need to put in 200,000? Where's the capital, the venture capitalists, the, the investors out there? You would think they'd all be just waiting in line to invest in this.
Mr. Mayor, I would be very happy to share where we stand, as well as what has, what has been the challenges as a business owner, and then what I see ongoing in the future. Currently, we have a investor who wrote us a $300,000 check. And one of the reasons why we accepted her investment is because she wants to set precedent against other investors who are looking to make a quick buck. Her objective, as well as mine, is to make a positive impact on the community. Her name is Susan Wyman. She's make, making much forward progress on her mission through the Gunnison Community Capital Group. And we're a shining example of what is possible when community-minded investors come together and make a positive impact on the community in creating jobs. On that note, I would like to say the current conditions in the venture capital side has been really interesting. Number one, we, we, as a hardware player, it's very difficult to obtain funding when you're competing against a technology company. And that's one of the reasons why we chose Montrose, is because it's rich in manufacturing, as well as talent that is looking for those kind of jobs, manufacturing jobs, that have got a lot of experience in that end. However, having said that, these investors that we've been interacting with, and we've gone through quite a bit of due diligence, their objective is, of course, to 10x on their return in three years. That's what they would like to do. And what that also means, and the ones that I've spoken to, you know, they are very eager to introduce us to the likes of Johnson Outdoors, a very large, global, and very, very well-known company that has done outstanding forward moves and innovation, most especially in acquiring innovative companies that come up with the new technologies, such as the one that we have today. And what they would like to do, I'm not sure what Johnson Outdoors would like to do, but should they acquire us, they, of course, want to maximize on their return on their investment. And what that may look like is by having those jobs and the people that sweat hard in the, in the, in the company, and growing this company, as well as in their community, getting those jobs overseas and out of the state that would most benefit from a larger corporation like, like the one that I just mentioned as an example. So we are very, very tight with the funds that we're making available today, but we're also not being very liberal with the kind of funds that we would accept from a VC because we want to make sure that they come to the table with a very community mindset, they're in it for the long term, and they're not here just to simply introduce us to a large corporation and get the jobs out. I recognize, as the CEO and the founder of this company, that this is the community investing in us. And when we accept somebody else's investment, we want them to know that we have a fiduciary responsibility to the community of Montrose, and that we're here for the long term, and that our objective is not to leave Montrose, nor the state of Colorado, nor ship those jobs overseas to China. We're here to keep those jobs here, and we're going to only accept investors who align with that objective. And that's one thing that is very hard to come by right now. These funds that you're providing us is very interesting because it provides the strategic play to keep that voice and that vote and that, and the owner of the business to allow me to control this and steer the company to keep those jobs here, as opposed to VCs who are breathing down, let's say, my neck or pushing me towards voting, getting those jobs out. And, you know, I think that if we are able to obtain this agreement and get these, and obtain this agreement from you, City Mayor, we'll have a much greater chance of success of keeping those jobs here over the long term.
Thank you. Any other questions on page 20? 21? 24. Yvonne, would you like to speak?
Again, Yvonne Meek. I live at 211, 216 North Stowe, Apartment B, 1B, and I have a downtown commercial property that I fully own at 511 East Main Street. And my, my concern is that, not that you don't have a great idea, same with Mayfly, it's a great idea, what they brought in at that moment in time, but Mayfly specifically has not completed their contract to provide 55 new jobs, and they're asking for an extension. That's just one piece. So are we going to find ourselves in the same situation? And the next thing, this is taxpayer money. We can't be, we're not the funder for tax, for anybody's great idea with taxpayer money. The city should not be doing that. That's, there's no way that you can explain that any other way to me that I would accept that as a reasonable answer. The city should not be giving away money to people who have a great idea to have a business. And you talked about the state, the Office of OEDT, whatever the acronym is, OEIDT or whatever it is, but you talk about the state having all this money to support a great idea, Montrose doesn't have that money. You guys keep juggling it all over the place. Montrose doesn't have that money. You can smile and act like we do, but we don't, and it's time to stop the spending.
Dave Frank, 2866 Foxtail Drive, Montrose. I just have one question and clarification for, for Jonathan. Of the 98 FTEs, when you were speaking of your business plan, you're talking about the distributors and so on, are those part of that number? Or all 98 FTEs in Montrose?
Thank you, Dave, for the quick question. The majority of the jobs will be here in Montrose. I think if I review back on those numbers, only four of them will be international sales once we start entering international markets, and they would not reside here.
So, or, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the audience? Counsel?
I'll say something.
Sure.
Okay. So I believe that we have the responsibility to do what we can to improve the economy of Montrose, to create job opportunities, and especially with the big elephant in the town right now. And we're creating here, I think, jobs of a very productive, well, what's the right word, a high-tech nature in that this will not only put Montrose on the map globally, but I think it just can contribute to the quality of life because many of the jobs will be high-paid, and this company has plans for future products that I think will bring a lot of future business to us. And as Sandy pointed out, the multiplier is a big effect that we aren't even talking about today. So I, I think this is a great opportunity. No one has a crystal ball, and there's always risk with everything you do, but this is a loan that there's plenty of opportunity to be paid back, and I think it's creating good jobs in the community that are desperately needed.
Any other comments?
Sure, I'll add, that I think forward-thinking communities, forward-thinking municipalities are definitely in the business of economic development.
Clara, any comment?
I would just like to reiterate, reiterate what Councilmember Anderson has stated, that it would put Montrose on the map. I am new here and obviously do not know the legal technicalities of what is being discussed, but from what I've heard and my objective standpoint, I would just like to essentially touch upon the fact that if we do essentially help prop up the startup and essentially create, allow the ability to create the jobs in Montrose, I think that it could also turn out as an incentive for other companies that could possibly be more successful or have already been in further development than the startup we are discussing here. But essentially, what I'm trying to say is that I think if we do help prop up one startup and it turns out to be successful, that towards the end, it could be more, be more beneficial since many other companies would come to our municipality.
Thank you. And I'd honor a motion.
I will make a motion to approve an incentive grant agreement between the city of Montrose and Geyser Technologies LLC, as it's been presented.
I'll second that. And that passes 4-1. Number 15, professional services agreement. City council consideration of a professional service agreement with McLaren, Wilson, and Lowery Incorporated for Technical Advisor Design Assist Consulting Services. Bill Bell and Chief Hall.
This is an item we talked about at the last work session, previous week, when we had Jim McLaren here from the firm who does police technical design assistance. And he presented to the council, talked through what the scope of work might be, what he would recommend as far as process and procedures when we go to build the new police building. And it was a great discussion we had. We were also able to go with Mayor Bowman and Mayor Protem Bynum to tour several facilities in Colorado. Chief Hall and I toured some around the Chicago area as well. Some of those facilities were assisted by Jim McLaren, and so the proposed agreement's in the packet, if there's any questions on that. If Chief Hall wants to add anything that I, I forgot, or Jim's been a big part of this process as well.
You guys, anybody, I'll note to staff before I go to audience.
I'll, I'll add a couple of comments about it. You know, the reason for a need of this technical advisor is that a police department is not a typical building. It's not like a city hall, it's not like a school building. It's a very specific and technical building that does require expertise from an expert like this. And Jim McLaren is definitely that. He's proven that in buildings locally that we toured, but also across the nation. So he's well-known for his expertise in this type of building.
I can take public comment.
Yvonne Meek, 216 North Stowe, 1B. I just want to clarify that this particular amount is coming out of the PST amount. Okay, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Counsel?
I'd just like to say, having sat through the presentation of this gentleman and knowing a little bit of the, the construction background, I think it's an extremely unique building. There are a lot of government requirements on it, and I think it is well in our best interest to have an individual like that looking over our shoulder.
I was impressed, Blaine and the rest of you who did the tour, with your comments that the other police buildings in the state of Colorado that have been built also avail themselves of this type of position, and how it saved them money in the long run, made their buildings more efficient, and it really helped the entire process. I would be more pleased to do this than to get into a building and find out in five years, we made errors. First of all, it cost us more, we went over budget, all of that, but also that the building isn't functional.
Yeah, I would agree. And one comment, and I actually just heard this here about a week and a half ago, that for a police building, or a hospital, or emergency services building, when you have a crisis in your community, that building ramps up in everything it does. It doesn't ramp down because oftentimes, people will be coming to those buildings during that crisis. So everything from backup power, generators, electricity, plumbing, all of those different things, it's a different standard and a different level because it is an emergency services building, so it has to be built correctly.
Judy and I would just reiterate what you said. Not only did the folks we talked to who had built other police buildings say that this was an important position, they said, "If I could give you one single piece of advice, it would be to hire someone like this."
And of the people who are available, this man came highly recommended, this, I'm not, sorry, this firm.
He did, actually, just real quick, when the city manager and I toured buildings in Chicago through the IACP class that we went to, it was taught by a different architect who used some of this architect's designs and toured his buildings. So if that says something, that probably says a lot.
Dave Stockton, 3009 Cook Drive. Sorry I didn't raise my hand fast enough earlier. I just wanted to point a clarification that this personal service agreements with McLaren, Wilson, and Lowery, they're just going to be an advisory role, but we do have opportunities for local architects to design this building and other contractors to build the building. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, there was a lot of misperception that we're outsourcing everything to out of state. I just want to get clarification in my own mind, that they're consultants, and we do have opportunities for local businesses to participate. So, thank you.
Yeah, in fact, he, he was pretty emphatic about utilizing local people himself.
Clara, anything?
I have no comment to give, sir.
Thanks. I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the professional services agreement with McLaren, Wilson, and Lowery for Technical Advisor Design Assist Consulting Services, as presented.
I'll second that.
And passes unanimously. 16, asbestos abatement bid recommendation. City council consideration of a bid for asbestos abatement for structures at, structures at 439 South Second Street and 430 South First Street. Jim Shy, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. So this item hasn't changed at all since work session, but to recap a few points, this is one of the first steps also related to the new police department building, and that's in the asbestos abatement of the neighboring building to this building, which is the old Wells Fargo drive-through, and the building is straight to the south of the existing police department. And they're both vacant right now, but they do contain asbestos, so before we can demo those buildings, we need to abate the asbestos. And so we had the buildings assessed and had documents drawn about how to abate the buildings, issued those for, through an RFP for abatement, and we received 11 different bids, which was a lot more than we anticipated, and just means there was a lot of interest in the project. Six of those did meet our procurement standards, and they are provided in the document here. Even with local preference applied, it wouldn't have changed the outcome to this, but the low bid was to ARC abatement out of Grand Junction. They have a great reputation, and so with that, that would be who we'd recommend awarding this contract to. But I'd be happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Jim, with, once that abatement has been carried out, the city is going to try to demolish the building?
That's right. We, we will use city crews to demolish one of the buildings. That's the Wells Fargo building, mainly because it'll be a little easier to demo, and we're not specialized necessarily in demolition, so we'll take the easy one. The other one may be a little more difficult, and then we would contract that out.
Thank you.
Can we just clarify? We're talking about the old Wells Fargo building that's been empty for a while. I just don't want anyone to misunderstand that we're demoing the current Wells Fargo building.
That's, that's right. Sorry, I should have clarified. It is city, city property, city building, just directly behind this building, it used to be the Wells Fargo drive-through.
Any other questions from counsel? Any other questions from council? Questions from the audience? I'd entertain a motion. Are we, Clara, anything from you?
No, nothing to say, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to award a contract for asbestos abatement for structures at four thirty nine South Second Street and four thirty South First Street to A R C abatement of Grand Junction, Colorado for the not to exceed amount of eighty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars.
I'll second that.
Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Seventeen, vehicle purchase bid recommendation. City council consideration of a bid for the purchase of twenty-one new Ford vehicles. And Public Works Manager, Jim Shy, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And the reason for the tie tonight is the vehicle purchase to Montrose Ford. So again, this hasn't changed from work session, but a few points are, this is twenty-one vehicles total, which is kind of two parts. One is part of our replacement schedule that, that we've, we've had planned since last year, but also includes additional vehicles for the police department through the new public safety sales tax. So those are funded through the public safety fund. But six of those additional vehicles are, are for that. And the remaining fifteen are for our replacement schedule that we've had budgeted. So I tried to separate out and explain that a little bit in the document here, how, how part of this is replacement, some of it's additional. There is one additional vehicle that's not part of the, the police department. That is an additional truck in our Parks Division. And with that, I'm recommending that we award this to local Montrose Ford. With local preference, they, they would have been in comparison, the low bid. They, they are, in hard numbers, they are higher, but with our preference applied, they would be low. And I did see Dean is in the room here. He's the fleet manager for Montrose Ford. And he's who we work with closely on getting some of these bids put together and other purchases that we've made through Ford on, on other bids. So I'm sure he would answer any questions as well if you have any.
Can you remind us, on local preference, it's a percentage of the overall amount that if it's within that, if, can you, I think that's really an important distinction because we get asked a lot, why don't you keep business in town, you should buy local? And we do have a, like, we'll take the higher bid if it's within a certain percentage when it's local.
That's right. So we do five percent advantage given to Montrose County bidders up to fifty thousand. So that's where this case would have been slightly above fifty thousand. It would have been really close, but with fifty thousand applied as a comparison purpose, that's how it was lower than the only other bid we received.
Okay.
Sorry, I forgot to turn this on. Thank you very much for being here. I think this is the first time we've had this opportunity to meet with you or, or your firm. We hear really excellent reports from the fleet manager and Public Works and the police department about working with your company. So thank you very much for bidding on this and being able to keep this as local.
Yeah, we've really worked hard on rebuilding some relationships and we've kind of, we're out of touch there for quite a while. So we've really worked hard on reconnecting those relationships, so hopefully we're on the right track.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What type of, what type of a warranty program do we have on the cars?
Sorry?
What type of a maintenance or warranty program come with the cars?
Well, that was all in the bid. So there's, you know, the factory warranty is, is pretty standard. And then there's available extended warranties for any, anything that, that, whether it's powertrain or full commitment to, you know, mere the factory warranty, that's all available, so.
It doesn't make much difference whether it was a standard car or a police car, the warranties are pretty similar?
Right, right. Yeah.
Okay, so we're purchasing whatever, the number is twenty-one. Do those all arrive on the same magic day?
No, no, they don't. There's a, it's pretty detailed as far as the upfitting, the emergency lights. And I mean, that's probably a third of the cost of each vehicle on the police antiseptors. So it's very intricate wiring and a lot of things. So it's, it's not going to all hit at once. No, they're going to be, we have to do some flatbeds and various different scenarios for the trucks. So it, you know, it's going to be months difference, sixty days at least, you know, hundred and twenty days difference.
I can see Public Works being overwhelmed if all of a sudden twenty-one cars drive in.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
I guess not.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion from council?
Jim, do we, do we utilize any of the lighting equipment or anything off the existing cars to put onto the new ones? Or we, we get all new stuff?
It's almost entirely new. We do reuse some radios. Most often we find with police vehicles that by the time the vehicle is, is worn out and is, and if it's life, the equipment in it is extremely outdated. So the equipment inside it doesn't live as long as the vehicle. So as the case is with a lot of the, we're replacing a lot of our old Crown Vics and the equipment in them is, I would say is even more outdated than the car. And the car, they don't make it anymore.
Any other questions? Clara? Want to ride in the police car, brand new one?
Only if I can drive it.
You have to talk to Chief Hall about that. And I'd entertain a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to award the purchase of twenty-one new Ford vehicles to Montrose Ford for the total price, the purchase price of one million twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars and a new tie.
And I'll second it.
Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Number eighteen, city council consideration of the purchase of two point eight one five acres of Montrose County parcel three seven six seven two nine one zero seven zero zero two along the Uncompagre River at the purchase price of one hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. And Scott Murphy, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So the property under consideration for purchase is on the western side of the Uncompagre River, north of Main Street, just coming off of Marine Road. So on figure one, your packet show, or, let's see, yeah, figure one shows the larger parent parcel. The portion that's being purchased, this is a five acre approximately parcel. The portion that's being purchased is just the lower two point eight acres. It leaves its access and upland uses intact. The portion we're looking to purchase are the lower, more unusable for development purposes type land down in the flood plain, down in the wetlands, but of benefit to the city for two purposes driving this project. One is the Uncompagre River Improvements Project that'll be taking place alongside Colorado Outdoors with the help of the C W C B grant money. And also in line with master plan, direction for the Uncompagre Riverway Master Plan, which seeks to have the city purchase and get riparian areas into, be purchased by the city for the public benefit, for ecological purposes and for, you know, fishing and recreational purposes. So the parcel, once purchased, would be used initially, or in the immediate future, for side channels and to allow construction of that river project. So if you look on figure two, or the next page after figure one, so I guess figure two, I forgot to label it, sorry, shows, you know, where that parcel sits in relation to where the river will sit. Upon completion of this project, that was, the project was approved by the U R A Board yesterday to start construction in November. And this is kind of the last piece of that. As far as the property value, it's, the larger parent parcel is on the market for one point one million. So we're getting a pretty good deal here. As is typical of property purchases, we hire a consultant to do all the negotiations, to create an independent third party. And as part of that, they hire an independent certified appraisal, or appraiser that specialized in these types of acquisitions. So it's not like a typical residential property appraiser. These work specifically on city properties and government rights of way and things of that sort. So that was done by Roberts Appraisals out of Grand Junction. The property was valued at fifty thousand dollars per acre, which equals, or gets, brings it up to one forty-seven fifty. Through additional negotiations, that price came up to a hundred and eighty-three and was ultimately agreed upon by both parties at the hundred and eighty-three. So if approved, the city would sign a memorandum of agreement documenting the conditions of the sale and then it would move towards closing. As far as the financials, so property acquisitions, we generally know about them at budget time and talk about them, but they're not put in the budget on a line because it would give us a pretty big disadvantage going into a negotiation if they knew exactly what our top line was. So for that reason, these projects are done on a case-by-case basis, which at the end of the year would require a supplement if, or possibly require a supplement if the general fund is over, as we talked about earlier on other issues. So I'm happy to answer any questions on this one.
Any comments from the audience? Council? I am seeing none. Yvonne?
I have a question about where the funds are coming from to purchase the product. Is it going to be part of the Mura, the, you know, urban renewal program? Or will it be some other fund?
No, this is city general fund money.
Undesignated fund balance. Undesignated fund balance, okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the audience? Council? Clara?
Nothing to say, sir.
I'd entertain a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to purchase two point eight one five acres of Montrose County parcel three seven six seven two nine one zero seven zero zero two along the Uncompagre River at a purchase price of a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Number nineteen, six five three zero road bridge deck replacement bid recommendation. City council consideration of the award of construction and engineering support contracts for the sixty-five thirty road bridge deck replacement project. And Scott Murphy again.
Thank you, sir. So this is the rebid of a project we tried to bid last year. Got higher than expected prices, so we put it out for bid again this winter. The project will replace the bridge deck over Cedar Creek on sixty-five thirty road. Picture is worth a thousand words or a thousand asphalt cracks. Photo two shows what that existing bridge deck looks like. So it's pretty obvious that it's at the end of its life. All the cracks you see there are as a function of that deck just yielding and getting weaker over time. Certainly safe, has been safe for passage, but it's reached the end of its service life and we've gotten everything we can get out of it and now it's time to replace it. So the project will completely remove the existing bridge deck, rehab the existing girders. So the girders are in pretty good shape, but need to be recoded for corrosion purposes and things of that sort. So reuse those existing and then stiffen up the deck by making it a composite section where we actually integrate the deck into the girders and make it a one big strong section. So it'll perform better and last longer than this previous one did for a decent life. The project was put out to bid and we received five bids. The lowest was Ridgeway Valley Enterprises out of Montrose, which we've had success with on previous projects and can confidently recommend award to. Their bid was four hundred and eight thousand. We're also looking for an additional fifteen thousand to hire the design engineer, which was Dow, also out of Montrose, to do some of the specialized structural inspections. Under our, our license, we can't do structural. So there are some elements that we just can't do in-house. All the other inspection elements, like on most projects, we do in-house, so. Let's see, the, so the impacts for this product are pretty substantial. So because the deck is getting completely removed and it's as narrow as that bridge is, there's really no way to keep that open throughout construction. So we've put a tight window on the, on the closure, a pretty aggressive schedule with the contractor. So they'll have to close that road completely. We'll have detours set up. The detour is either over to sixty-four fifty road via, I think it's Kentucky, or over to North Hillcrest via Lincoln. And we'll have, you know, warning signs and detour signs because we don't want someone to drive all the way down there and then find out they can't get out and have to turn around and thing of that sort. Any neighborhood short cutting issues, if they come up, which sometimes do on projects, we'll work to mitigate those as they occur and definitely keep an eye out for those. So, yeah, again, seventy calendar days from closure. We're looking, we tried to get this product in as early as possible before the summer rush hits on traffic. So they are going to be starting next week, so they'd be looking to close the road February tenth. And then off to the races, so the hope would be, it'd be done and up and running before the summer, summer rush. As far as the budget goes, the twenty twenty budget included five hundred and twenty thousand dollars for this project. So that puts us ninety-seven thousand under, so. And that's, I think that's it. And I made a good case too of, of what timing does for pricing. So the original bids were a hundred and ten thousand higher when we bid last fall. So it was great, it worked out great to, to do the rebid in this case. Better contractor availability and more competition, so.
Glad you rebid it, that was a great decision. In addition to signage on the ground, with closing this, this access in just a few days, are there additional ways we can let the community know what to expect so that they aren't thrown off on their morning commute?
Yeah, absolutely. So we have a press release going out and we're going to be putting out message board signs probably tomorrow, starting to warn people of the closure coming. Those are usually the most effective because the people driving those get to, get to see it firsthand, so. And then, you know, with some of the heavier side traffic at like sixty-four fifty road, Hillcrest has a signal, so that's not a big deal. But at sixty-four fifty road, where the detour will be going to, we'll add some message board signs and heavy side traffic signage to try and get people to just be aware of, of the heavier activity there and drive a little more defensively.
I kind of had a question that maybe Jim might answer, but I wondered about trash truck traffic on the way out to the landfill. Will this?
So that will impact their routes and they'll have to take the detour just the same as?
But the detour will be fine for them to?
Yep, it'll just add to their, tie into their, sorry, Jim.
Okay.
See the thumbs up though, so.
Okay, thanks.
They adapt. Nothing like the roundabout, that was, that was tough on the trash routes.
And this amount of money has already been budgeted?
Correct. Yep, this was aligned in the twenty twenty budget, under the capital fund.
We saw this last fall, thank you.
Correct, yep.
Any other questions from council? Clara?
It's ninety-seven thousand dollars under, so I would approve.
Good girl.
She's learning quick.
And then I guess I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to award the contract to Ridgeway Valley Enterprises in the amount of four hundred and eight thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty cents, including a ten percent contingency and engineering support contract to Dow in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars as an, as needed time and material basis.
Second.
Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Number twenty, Woodgate Road Realignment Design Contract Award. City council consideration of the award of a design contract for the Woodgate Road Realignment Project. Scott Murphy, one more time.
Thank you, Mayor. So nothing's changed as far as I know from the work session, but I'll just quickly recap kind of the project and what we're doing and why. So this project is for the design of, and which allows us to start on the property acquisitions for the Woodgate Road Realignment. So a couple of things coalesce in a bad way at the intersection of East Oak Grove and Townsend, just by the nature of the way the original town was laid out and how things have changed over the years. Where Woodgate Road joins Townsend just south of East Oak Grove Road. Anybody who's tried to get in or out of that intersection knows how fun that can be at the busy times of day. Given its close proximity to Townsend intersection, you have a lot of queues backing up into that intersection. Anybody coming down East Oak Grove, which are quite a bit, especially with the South Hillcrest extension now complete, a lot of people draining in and are coming to and from that portion of town are destined for the southern portion of town, but forced to go direct onto Townsend for that short three hundred and fifty- direct onto Townsend for that short 350-foot reach and then back onto Woodgate if they're staying on the eastern side. So, what that does is create a lot of capacity issues at that intersection, safety issues as well as the undesired side effect of some people shortcutting through the Vista San Juan neighborhood to try and avoid that signal and avoid that congestion, which is, you know, the city road network is built to keep the main through traffic onto the minor arterials, not through residential streets. And so, this is aimed at giving them that. So, the project will look at different alignments. So, the way we configure that through to come back to East Oak Grove, first, we've got to make sure that's the right answer and it's going to solve the problem. So, we'll be doing studies on various alignments and different traffic studies and models to quantify the kind of pros and cons of all the different options, make sure they work, and then with that, engage the neighborhoods and the businesses, obviously, the landowner there, and then like US Bank adjacent businesses, to make sure that what we come up with is the best fit for kind of all parties involved, and we'll work for them. So, that's the project. So, to go through the design, we, or to get the design team on board, we solicited a request for qualifications, which are, I guess, was requests for proposals technically. So, it was based on qualifications and price. So, we take, seek, we asked for a lot of the detail on exactly how they want to go about the project and their approach and all the traffic modeling and things of that sort. Through that process, and then a panel reviews that. So, through that process, we selected Delmont Consultants, a Montrose firm, and Steve Stevenson, their president, is here, thank you, Steve, was rated the highest out of that process at 3.7 on a four-point scale at a price of $99,200. Another one that, 150,000 was budgeted, so this one is 51,000 under that. And that works all done on a T&amp;M, not-to-exceed basis, so we only pay for what we use, so hopefully they budget conservatively come in even under that. And then, as far as schedule, the project would start as soon as, or with contract award, go through the design studies and kind of community outreach to finalize the alignment. And then, once that alignment's finalized, we would start on the property acquisitions, which can be a lengthy process depending on how they go. It can be as short as three months, but it could be as long as a year depending on how those negotiations go. So, the land that this realignment would be going through is currently private land, so we have to purchase all of that at market value, but, and then just working with them on the various iterations of exactly how that lays out for their future purposes so that they have viable commercial lots that remain on each side, and it could be a dual benefit for both the city and for that development of that area is the ultimate goal. So, happy to answer any questions.
No roundabout?
Not in the packet. That was his idea. Steve, that was Steve's idea.
I'll open this up for public comment. Seeing no official public comment, I'll ask counsel. Any questions?
Yeah.
It's not a question. It's just a comment. I want to thank you for finally getting on to this, and on behalf of all the people in the southern part of the community, thanks. I'm anxious to see this get going and appreciate the work on it, and also, the involvement of the community around there, the things you mentioned, I think is really important. So, thank you for that, too.
Clara?
Nothing to comment, sir.
Thank you. And entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to award a professional services contract to Delmont Consultants in the amount of $99,200 for completion of design studies and civil design associated with the Woodgate Road realignment project.
Well, I'll second it since you beat me to the motion.
Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Staff reports, please.
I think Chief Hall was going to give an update related to the Citizens Academy.
Thank you. So, I have a couple of updates that I want to announce. Tomorrow night for our Citizens Police Academy, we'll be teaching the hiring process, internal affairs, and our training process within the Police Department, taught by Commander Smith and Sergeant Chris Velasquez. And then, the second half of that is our school resource presentation instructed by Commander Smith, Officer Booth, and Barry. The reason I bring that up is because in August of this year, when the school, when school starts back up, we have a new school resource officer that we've selected, and you all told us that we should celebrate the successes of 2A when we can make those announcements. And so, Officer Jeremy Payne will be one of our new school resource officers. If you know Officer Payne, he also runs a kickboxing school in our community and is awesome with children. Not necessarily putting those two together, though. He's going to be great. And the priority, if we can, will be to hire the additional school resource officer and maybe get them on board in August as well. So, I think that's really good news. Then, on February 15th, which is a Saturday evening from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., the Police Department will be teaching sexual assault prevention and awareness. This is something for teens, for parents, for single moms or single dads, to come and learn about some of the dangers that are honestly in our community, from being online to sexting, to being blackmailed, to just some of the things that you can do to make yourself safe in the community. And unfortunately, with, on average, 69 sex assaults that are reported to the Montrose Police Department every year, many of those are against children, and so we wanted to put this program together. It's staffed by a panel of experts within our community that teach these types of classes, and so it's going to be great. So, you can sign up by calling the Police Department, 252-5200, or you can sign up online, cityofmontrose.org/polic. And Counselor Bynum, I can see you may have a comment or question.
I totally have a question.
All right.
What age range would this be appropriate for, and at a certain age, do they need to have a parent with them?
Yeah, that's a really good question. I think that it would be appropriate for age ranges, I would say, 13 and above. If you want to bring your child, you know, 12 and under, please make sure that you attend as well. We're not going to go into the graphic detail of what some of these things are, but it's more based around prevention and awareness. But I think it will spark good conversations, and honestly, 13 or above parents should attend, too, because you're, you need to talk about this stuff. It's important.
Please tell us date again.
You bet. The sexual assault prevention and awareness training is February 15th. That's a Saturday evening from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Call the Police Department to sign up, or cityofmontrose.org/polic, or I don't really care if you sign up or not, just come to the class. So... What's that? It's actually going to be, that's another good point, in the Centennial Room, here at the city. And then, yes, Dave?
Can we make that Facebook post a little more shareable?
Sure. I will talk to Kaylee, probably, and, and we're also on Instagram now, the Police Department is, so I think we posted that on Instagram, but we can absolutely make it more shareable if it needs to be. So, you bet. And then, lastly, this coming February 22nd and 29th, we will be teaching, those are both Saturdays, from 8:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. in the Centennial Room, a Spanish Latino Citizens Police Academy. And those will be two sessions where we'll be going over a Spanish version of really the same sexual assault awareness training that we're presenting on the 15th. Also, awareness training for domestic violence, community partnerships, school bullying, those types of classes will be taught, and you can sign up with Ricardo Perez, the head of the Hispanic Affairs Project. He can be reached at 970-123456. I'm sorry, that's incorrect. He can be reached. I'll get back to you on that. See, that's wrong. Call the Police Department, just like everything else. We'll get you set up. So, terribly wrong there. Anyway, so that's going to be a really good class. Ricardo has said that there are around six individuals that have signed up already. We're hoping for more, but I believe these are going to be classes that honestly will be more of a word-of-mouth type of advertisement situation, but we really want people to come out for this one, and it will be taught in Spanish. So, that's what I have.
Clara? Anything from youth counsel?
Yes, we have decided on the date for Habitat for Humanity Build Day. It shall be on April 25th. On the high school side, we have gotten the student council and multiple other high school clubs to join in. We are in the process of essentially figuring out what people below 16 are going to be doing, since they can't necessarily be on the build side due to hazard concerns. And we have a theme for Rock the Rec. The name is Winner Takes All. It'll essentially be a miniaturized sports competition, but it'll also be like open gym. And on the youth employment project update, we have talked with Kathy Gaber from MHS, and from what I know, we are, what's it called? We're going to, so there's already Google Forms that is offered to businesses around our county, so we are essentially going to add something in regards to employing youth, not only among internships and like for small reasons, so...
Yeah, that's all I got to add.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. I have another comment, so this is like separate aside, like not as a U-City Council person, but I'm part of Astra, and we're essentially trying to start a literacy project in the Tortilla Fly area. So, after we get to U-City Council, we are going to try to get on the agenda for City Council to speak to you about our project, which is in conjunction with LULAC and the Altroso Affiliated Club at MHS.
Great, just let us know. We'd love to hear from you. Is this having to do with the mailboxes with books? And fantastic, I saw that on Facebook or something. That's a great, great idea. Anything counsel can do, I'm sure we'll be happy to help you guys with. Fantastic.
Thank you.
Are you ready for us?
Yes.
I wanted to point out particularly to our listening audience that yesterday at work session, we discussed, since we've had some changes in the way we do work session, we will now be televising work session as well as the City Council meetings. So, in the future, you can expect to be able to see us if you want to go on the city website and go into the work session videos, as well as, I believe, you guys were talking things yesterday that I don't know what they all mean, but something about putting them out on social media and doing things.
We have a YouTube channel. I assume it's called City of Montrose, and all their work sessions and City Council meetings, the City Council are already there. Work sessions will start in two weeks, so we are really working to make ourselves more available and transparent in living color, and check us out.
I think the work sessions won't be livestreamed. Is that, is that right?
No, I believe they, we have the technology, so yes, I believe so.
Okay, so I stand corrected. They will be livestreamed?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, perfect.
I've got a couple of things. First off, I'd like to congratulate the Montrose Aletha NJROTC organization. They went probably Colorado Springs a couple of weeks ago for a statewide competition, and our Montrose Aletha NJROTC kids came out first in the state. Congratulations to them, that's fantastic. I want to mention that there's a special showing of a brand-new documentary movie that was created by two of the, I don't, I don't know if they're still teachers, but employees of the school district, Matt Jenkins and John Steele, and it's documenting, I don't know if you remember, about a year or so ago, there was a gentleman, also a teacher at Montrose High School, Adam Wright, who fell about 60 feet in the Black Canyon. Luckily for him, some people came by pretty quickly after that, found him, I guess they airlifted him out, but the, he had a couple of broken arms, broken legs, really smashed up after a 60-foot drop in Black Canyon, but these gentlemen have put together a movie called Lessons on Fate and Falling. It'll be shown at Intrinsyc at 6:00 this Friday, probably like a $10 fee to get in. And then, Saturday, February 15th, it'll be shown downtown at the Fox Theater. Again, it's a locally-done movie about a local gentleman that had a huge tragedy that luckily turned out to be not quite that bad. So, if you're interested in that, check that out. And with that, I'd entertain, it'll be at the Fox Theater on the 15th at 2:00 p.m. and this Friday at Intrinsyc at 6:00. You're welcome.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Let's go home.